First, we'll get started. Um, in the case of emergency, you can go out the door and in either direction. Um, down the stairs or elevator. Um, and if those aren't working, there is an area of refuge just at the top of the stairs to the right. Are there any agenda changes? Okay, hearing none, um. We are open to the public for items not related to the agenda. You're joining us online, you can um unmute if you have anything.
Small speak, then raise your hand and we cannot mute. So it's a little bit different, but functionally the same.
Perfect, you can raise your hand, please. Does anyone in the room have anything not related to the agenda?
I do.
Okay, then we can move on to announcements, Donna?
I don't know if it's an announcement so much, it's just a um kind of what I was doing two weeks ago. Um, I got a really nice tour of affordable housing in Pittsburgh. Also stomping ground and my old stomping ground. And um, you know, kind of identifying that some of the problems we have here are certainly not unique. But I, but I kind of noticed that. A lot of their housing was much smaller scale than, you know, than the downtown here. But it's, but it's sort of spread out and, you know, the affordable nature of it was equally difficult. You know, it's, it's very expensive to build there. It seems more expensive to build here, but not by much. And um, and the, the architects who I, who, who were doing the tour. Kind of thought that the problem was just that they've attracted a lot of um, young Google employees there. And that they don't have enough, they don't have enough contractors. Even in a city as big as Pittsburgh, they, they're running out of contractors because people are retiring. So it's, it's, so their thought was it was largely a labor problem. Labor, materials are going up too, but they thought the labor was a more significant problem than the, than the materials. Because you can design things differently with different materials, the labor is kind of, you know. Anyway, thought it was, I thought it was pretty, pretty interesting tour.
Thanks. Anyone else have announcements?
Yeah, well, something of interest, I was invited to a Bauhaus Festival in Berlin. Um, it was supposed to be that their new building, I mean, but the new building was supposed to be ready in September, but it's two years late. However, uh, the new building is, is built in part and it's a very, very interesting and eco-friendly design. There's a little bit of concrete basement only. The surrounding is steel. And everything else is wood, engineered wood, made off-site and dropped in from the top before they put the roof on. That means floors, doors, walls, partitions, stairs, the lot. So, and the designer was an architect called Helmut Stab. S- S T A A B, uh, there was a big competition for it.
Michael, would that be considered mass timber? As a form of construction?
Uh, no, because mass timber is external as well. So this was a, I guess, a hybrid. But it's maybe the way of the future.
The way you went like this, is it a round structure? Oh, oh.
Yeah, I'm trying to get a video, but um, the architect may not be willing. To let me have it, um, because it covers six years of the construction, of the planning and construction. If, if I get it, I'll bring it.
So it's not affordable housing, it's just.
No, it's just, uh, just a very, very eco-friendly design because they're using almost. No cement. And uh, no bricks which, you know, use a lot of energy to be fired. Just wood.
The modular, it, it sounds um, almost like modular, like you'd be building some things like maybe in. Like here, our construction season's so short and so much of it's like exposed to the elements, the idea of what you're talking about where you can like have pieces. Kind of dropped into a shell. Seems interesting.
But it's insulated because the, out of what, the walls that are inside this steel structure are also wood. And uh, very good, the high level, high R factor.
Any, anything else? Or any staff items?
Uh, I've got a couple. One, I'm very excited to announce that last week, our newest uh, team member, Alex Levin, joined us. Um, he is our new development review planner, uh, so he works mostly with the DRB. Um, Marty Gillies, who'd been with us for three years, moved on earlier this summer. Um, Alex, we're really excited to bring some uh, new energy and some new skill set to us. Uh, he was a middle school teacher. Earlier in his career, um, he has um, worked as a builder. And an educator around um, energy subjects um, on statewide groups, so. Um, really neat new skill set for us, um, being able to talk about the things. And I've got a really good um demeanor as a, as a teacher to be able to be in our community and speaking with a lot of folks. Uh, just getting up to speed this week, so. Um, that's one. Um, you've probably noticed some construction happening around uh, city center. Uh, lots of things happening before we get to the winter season with the uh, sidewalk and water line by uh, Healthy Living Trader Joe's. Uh, a traffic signal going in the east end of Market Street and the one that you may or may not have noticed. Of a um, two um, uh, shared use path connections and boardwalks. From Market Street and Garden Street over into City Center Park. Um, and it's gonna be really neat, you know, bringing the neighborhoods together. Uh, I love the fact that I walked it a couple of weeks ago and seeing that it goes intentionally. Right by the playground for the new daycare and daycare. Um, install the gates so that they can go right in there, um, you know, and bring the kids um, into City Center Park and into the. Uh, a natural environment or somewhat natural environment right in their back door. And turn the other way and come to a city center library, which is really cool.
And the goose park is really nicely connected, beautifully done.
And this, you know, ultimately connects Markot School to um, the middle school and the high school. Um, all sort of a second way. There's Dorset Street, but this is also a back way. Because off Barrett Street, uh, the middle school and high school has a connection there of Stastriat, so really neat stuff going there.
Great. When is the light gonna, the traffic light gonna be activated?
Uh, this fall, I don't have an exact date, but this fall. And I think those were the two, oh, uh, a little less outwardly exciting, but inwardly exciting to us. Um, we are uh, preparing to launch um, on our uh, permit software. So for all the types of permits people do from a fence permit all the way up to a major subdivision. Um, it's already live with fire and the clerk's office. If you have a cat or dog, you may have used it already this year. Um, Public Works and Planning and Zoning are planning to la- launch in January, so we're in testing right now. And um, parallel to that, we are also um, uh, launching new software to do all of our. Uh, accounts payable stuff, um, which is really uh, important backbone information, both to have. Good accounting and making sure that we're at the forefront of that, but equally important to be able to report out really well on it and provide the council and. Um, and all others, the information in a timely and thoughtful manner, so. Back of the house, really great stuff. Those are my updates.
Um, if you didn't know, the South Burlington Construction Update page. Contains a little quick moving GIF of the construction of the water tank. Because Andy put a GoPro up on the, the, the radio tower, it looks down, so you can see. So, if you get a chance, go take a look at it.
And I guess, I would say, um. Kelsey helped write our annual report that goes to the city council. Put an amazing draft together. It's very technical, but it lists all of the members, um, including Paul, who was. Um, on the commission, um, and it gives a report of fiscal year which ended in July. And it's mostly technical, but kind of lists our big accomplishments and the LDR amendments and then um, gives kind of a thank you to. Staff and um, everyone who participates with the committees and the public. As well, so that is going to council, um, as part of all their reporting.
Yeah, so all the, the commissions, the bo- the committees, um, the departments all sort of write these. Sections that all get comp- compiled, compiled together into an annual report for fiscal year twenty-five.
Okay, so we can get started. Um, the agenda was up there. We are doing the height. Uh, let me see what it's actually called. Um, so we're on item five, which is the land development regulation. Allowed height north of the Williston Road and west of I eighty-nine. Section, and this was a holdover from our um, agenda last meeting. Um, where we felt like we wanted to adjust our agenda to really focus on the parks and open space plan, so this got bumped to this meeting. So some of you may have seen the exact same thing, um, we just didn't do it last time.
So, um, just as a tiny bit more background, this was a change um, that was proposed in the last round of LDR amendments. Um, that the city council asked the planning commission to take another look at, um, so this is the property. Immediately behind the double tree on the west side of the highway. Um, it backs, so it's the area in orange in this, in this image here. The green that you see is to the northeast is the beginning of um, the Centennial Woods area, area, that's the IA North zoning district. Um, so that's UVM land, but so is the land that's in the orange. There is a parking lot that you can see there that is sort of down a weird long driveway and then there's a big parking lot. They primarily use that for staff parking, is my understanding. Um, I don't remember if it's both the university and the hospital, but it's at least one or, one or the other of those. It does connect to the back of the um, parking lot that is part of, that is. Appears to be part of the double tree, but is actually owned by UVM. The parcel line is at that blue. The zoning line there. So, what was proposed earlier was that that whole orange section, it is sort of a, an isolated island of HSMU zoning. Um, it's outside of the form-based code area. The blue color that you see is the T four um, transect zone in the form-based code area. So what was proposed in the last round was to add the um. Or, the full orange area from, move it from HSMU to T four. Um, paired with the increase in heights that was in that same round of amendments for the T four. That's when city council said, well, come, take another look at this, think about this in particular about. Um, the bound, bounding on uh, the Centennial Woods area. If UVM ever in the future, they haven't said anything about having plans for this, but. Um, they wanted to redevelop that parking lot, what could they put there, et cetera.
The back parking.
The back, that isolated parking lot in the back. So Paul, if you.
They'd run a bus service back and forth from.
They run a shuttle service back and forth. Um, so this is the second image, this was also in your packet. The sort of squiggly line, as you imagine, is wetland um, buffer line. And then the orange line that the red arrow is pointing to is our transit overlay uh, district. So as you can see.
And the yellow is the habitat block.
And the yellow is the, where do you see yellow? I thought that's wetland. In the front. I think that's wetland. Anyway, could be both. Anyway, and it is protected under Article twelve, one way or the other. Um, so as you can see, outside of the transit overlay district, there's only that one area that is their current parking lot. Um, that falls out of the transit overlay district. So as we wrote in the memo. Our staff recommendation is our transit overlay district is, is designed to be a proxy for where. People could effectively walk to transit service. There is transit service on Williston Road, which is down to the bottom left of the picture. Um, so, the proposal from us would be to move everything that is in, to move the whole thing to tran- to T four. But only have the heights apply inside the transit overlay district. Outside the transit overlay district, it would be the sa- the heights that are currently applicable in the HSMU. So the design standards would apply from.
More brown would stay T four, right there.
So this all would go to T four, but the heights, the higher heights would end at this orange line.
So is this change for this par specifically or for all of the form-based code districts?
This is the only place that is, now I'm, now I'm second guessing myself. That is inside the form-based code, but outside the transit overlay.
But in theory, if we were to then expand the transit overlay di- sorry, the, if we, if we were to change the transit overlay district. Or expand the cities, the, the form-based code area, it could theoretically apply to other areas in the future.
That's correct. So there is one other parcel that is affected, Colin. Um, as on Corey Hill Road, that is in form-based code, but outside of the transit overlay district. That parcel has a Vermont Supreme Court uh, limitation of one story on that parcel. So regardless of what we do, it's, it's sort of, it doesn't.
Oh, it's now that you said stuff on the court, yeah.
But, the, we, we felt that this was a pretty elegant solution um, to a question of heights. Because the logic of um, the. All our buildings within a quarter mile of transit, quarter mile of transit is can, is sort of the, the standard of. Greater walkability and so to have higher density appropriate near it is. Makes a lot of sense. Um, and um, I think, you know, backing up previously, I know John, you were on the DRB. Having, you know, having a double tree in the form-based code and the parking lot behind it. Not in the form-based code, um, you were on the board when wrestling with two completely different sets of standards. For a site that was trying to do a redevelopment of both. Um, a year ago and it was, it's sort of like, had to close one eye, pretend that one part of it didn't exist, but then have the impacts of it.
Just to back that up another step, the current construction that's at the double tree right now. Originally included um, further work by UVM on the back par- parking lot, not the farthest back parking lot. But where Paul has the cursor to develop some apartments that were um, student, student apartment housing. And that was sort of all paired together, um, as one project.
And importantly, a shared parking garage right here.
Right, and a shared parking structure.
Both, but yeah, straddle blowing.
So having, having.
Backed off on that, right?
Yes, yes, but having the, what appears to a person walking onto the site. As one development site sort of cut down behind the, the double tree building into two zoning districts. Cause some, some design and review problems.
Two very structurally different.
Very different, yeah. It wasn't like the difference between T four and T five, it was the difference between form-based code and not. So it was pretty dramatic.
Before we leave that, the, the dark blue and the light blue are river corridors?
This is a river cor- yes, this is a river corridor, this is a river corridor. They just, it's the same color, just there's other colors on top of it.
Any other commissioner questions? Anything from the audience or?
Just one question, how, how much of this, well, so a lot of this is responding to UVM's difficulty and. Coming up with a solution that, or, or to, just to make the zoning make sense. Uh, for that site, so assuming that there's gonna be some further development there, so is that?
So I guess I would back up a, a, a step further and say that, um, ten years ago when the form-based code came in. Um, this whole area along Williston Road and Dorset Street was all. The Commercial One Residential Twelve District, which became the high-scale mixed-use. Ten years ago, the planning commission decided to leave out the UVM properties. Um, because it was such a new thing and UVM, you know, with all their lands around was, it was, it was a complex piece. Um, having had the opportunity to see what that was like, um, and then to be able to communicate with UVM. They were um, expressed that they would be quite happy to be in the form-based code in the future. So it was really driven by us to say, here's the one remaining parcel that's still HSMU, everything else is already changed. So it, it's not so much in reaction to their development as. With some experience of the form-based code, um, and then them analyzing that they were comfortable with it. Um, and as it happens to be, there was a project in the last year that showed the complexity of having two different ones.
Um, we had some audience thing, um, Tom?
With regard to the height. What crossed my mind when I read the blurb was why restrict height at all? Um, the finances will restrict the height. I mean, the, the only thing that's been built all lately has been in downtown Burlington. And it took three developers to get together to try to do it. Somebody else failed, um, so the, the dollars alone would, would restrict how high anything is going to go. But otherwise, that's almost a perfect place. It's um, you know, not interfering with anybody's views that much. It's off to the side and if somebody actually wanted to go big, that would be about the best place in Chittingen County that I could think of. And it's also very accessible to transportation. How you, how somebody would plan a tall building, and I say tall, I mean, could be fifteen, thirty stories. I drive into Montreal every day and see new buildings working their way out towards the bridge. But, uh, and I, I realize it's hard to think of things in those terms because it hasn't been done here at all. But um, why restrict it? I, I guess, why would zoning be the reason not to do it? You know, I mean, because zoning is inherently a restriction on land, on what people can do with their land. So, uh, you know, ideally you do it sparingly. Um, and if somebody actually wanted to build something tall back there where their parking lot is. UVM wouldn't do it probably, but who knows what could happen in ten years even. They might decide to build a very tall, well, I don't know, I'm not gonna speculate. I just, it certainly crossed my mind, why uh, why restrict height at all?
Thank you, uh, Ryan Doyle speaking. Yeah, so, uh, right now, like, but the presentation indicates, you know, it's more than a quarter mile away from transit. Line than like, maybe like height isn't really what we're going for. But to be really clear, the reason why this presentation is here is because for an hour at a city council meeting. There was resistance to having tall buildings near trees. That is the change to the plan that you sent to the council. The reason why it's come back to you here is because it's close to the trees. Now, there's a highway cutting through Centennial Woods with a hundred thousand vehicles per day. It's the same highway that runs past my house that I can hear with the windows closed, right? This parking lot is in a very beautiful spot. A parking lot is a horrible use of land, right? But uh, just as the previous speaker was saying, not only is it a pretty reasonable place to put a building. It's a reasonable place to put a taller building than anywhere else. Because of its proximity to really large employers. Who currently, they have a bus service to the entire other part of the city. Where they have employees park and then ship them over, right? So we have not only a university, but a huge hospital, putting housing really close to those sources is really good for the environment. The taller you build on less land, the better it is for the environment. And so, the fact that there is trees there is, this is not a har- thing that's gonna harm the trees, right? The heat island effect of that parking lot is gonna have a worse effect than a building, right? The building will create microclimates, which is what you get. Uh, areas that have different topography, you get areas that are shadier and less shady. And that helps a greater diversity of species of plant flourish in their own little microclimates. So there's really no reason from an environmental point of view to say that that is a bad place to put a tall building. And for a lot of environmental reasons, it's a great place to put the tallest building. Uh, anywhere in the city or the state or the metro area. Not just because you can walk without even going to metro or bus services, you can walk to a lot of great places. And places to work and live, uh, work and shop. But I sent staff some images, uh, the tallest building in New Hampshire is twenty-two stories tall. So I took a Google screenshot from the highway bridge uh, of that. In that direction and of that very tall building in Manchester, it's twenty-two stories, two hundred and seventy-four feet tall. I sent it to staff, I superimposed them, so you can see just how insignificant a tall building looks. When it's that far offset from other things. So I think both the process by which this has come back to you is really discouraging, um, and. If you, at best, um, I think it's totally okay to get into like really detailed thoughts of why we zone things in different ways. But that wasn't the process. I think if we did an honest deep dive into a parcel like this. The conclusion would be just the opposite and that this is a place where we would put even taller buildings. We're looking at a situation where we are expected to add, what was it, eight thousand housing units in South Burlington?
Seventy-four hundred.
Seventy-four hundred.
Halfway between. Roll the ball.
More than any other community. And the historic pattern of suburban sprawl is both very bad for the environment. Because of the amount of land it takes up, but then the amount of extra cars it puts into the system and we. You know, the gas tax does not cover what it costs us to maintain and expand roadways. This is an area of our city, which doesn't seem like it's a part of our city. But is so close to other adjoining high intensity uses that this whole corner. I would much rather see upzone even higher, rather than have any kind of pressure to like downzone it in height. I think it can achieve a lot of goals for the region and our city to do the exact opposite than what's being presented here.
Thank you. Uh, are there any other comments? Yes.
Well, just background, I think members of the council were concerned that very tall buildings right. And next to the Centennial Woods would be, would in somehow impair the, the woods themselves. Be, or be inappropriate uh, so close to the Centennial Woods. That's what the council was concerned about.
Yeah, I guess a couple of comments on this would be, my, first of all, maybe I ask people who are um, more involved in the process. Me also, I'm, my, my understanding was the development that wasn't exactly here was more kind of in the. Close to the double tree that fell through because their per unit cost.
Around the helicopter pad.
Yeah.
Whereas the new buildings was gonna.
I mean, I, I'm frankly not enough of a developer to know whether building. The difference at the moment is essentially being strict for six stories versus twelve stories. If that increases or decreases the per unit cost, I am not as well informed about that regard, but. I don't know, I guess I would, I, I'd be sure, I, I, I'm not necessarily, I totally could see UVM wanting to put something. Big in there, though is big a whole lot of six-story over one taller tower, I mean, I just, I know a lot of. In other states, in a lot of cases where universities build just really big dorms to, you know, put a whole bunch of students in. Um, and you know, that takes pressure off our housing margins. Yeah, I mean, my personal thought is I do. I, I was, I guess I was also a little, a little surprised initially that we're breaking this fairly small chunk out. I mean, uh, in, in my sort of view, you got a, a area that's surrounded by trees. Which if anything obscures the view of any large buildings, like when you're in the woods, you're not gonna see anything. And frankly, you kind of, I, I feel we put something here, you sort of just run through, wow, there's a building here, cause it's kind of. It's already kind of already veiled as well. Uh, again, this, I, I had a sixteen-story dorm in my town of twenty thousand I grew up in. And it was kind of surrounded by trees on all sides, you kind of didn't really see it until you came up against it, so. If it were to me personally, I am fine with keeping that set T four as we originally proposed. I mean, it's not like this is single-family zone, I mean, it's still six stories either way and I don't know exactly how much difference coming from the other thing. But I guess, yeah, where I'm currently following is. I don't necessarily see how just having a bit more height. When it's next to trees, I mean, it's not like we're spoiling, we're not like we're overshadowing someone's house or something where, you know. It, it's surrounded by trees, I guess, I, I don't really see it as much of a concern perhaps as our people do, but. I don't, I don't know how much of a hu- huge deal it is either way.
So just as a quick clarification, um, we were asked to provide an, an option, so. In a, just, yeah, just laying it all out, I think there's three options in this, in this case, there is leaving an HSMU. There is leaving an HSMU, which is what it currently is after, um, as it was before. Um, changing the whole thing to T four with everything that goes with it all the way back. Um, and as you can see, the Article twelve, um, restrictions would effectively make most of that moot anyway. Um, except for the parking lot, the back-back parking lot area. Um, and then we were trying to figure out a way that made logical sense. Instead of it being sort of a spot zoning for one particular parcel. Um, that sort of splits the difference between those things, because that's, um, more or less, the council came back and said, just consider the options. So wanting to provide the sort of no-action option, they changed the whole thing to T four option. And then the logical option in between, which we, um, landed on. Matching the heights to the transit overlay district for the reasons we said before.
And just a tiny bit more context of the council discussion on this. Um, uh, one, I don't believe that anybody expressed any concern about the T four as a concept. The height was the discussion, um, I think Ryan captured a portion of the discussion. Um, another portion of the discussion, um, was counselors, a couple of them asked. Uh, Jessica and I, whether the planning commission had had an in-depth discussion about this particular part of the form-based code. And and we reported that, no, there had not been an in-depth discussion, and so some of. Some of the counselors voted to send it back to you for that in-depth discussion, not necessarily with a. Here's the outcome we're looking for, so I would recommend that you advance what you, the, the. Um, the option or something else that you want to advance as a planning commission.
Tim, did you wanna expand on that? I saw your hand was up.
I I just wanna say that the discussion at that council meeting centered around the proximity of the building to Centennial Woods. Centennial Woods is a renowned resource, natural resource for the University of Vermont, the city of Burlington, city of South Burlington. That island is surrounded by protected area, right? The concern was the massing of the building of the height in conjunction with a protected forested area. Might be aesthetically displeasing, right, to the other areas around it. It would stick out like a sore thumb, depending upon what height was allowed. There's gonna be some height there, we, and it's gonna be, something could be built there, yes. The consideration is, how much, um, do you? How do you feel about the height of that building within that protected resource? And do you think it's important to scale them similarly so that they don't affect each other in that respect from an aesthetic point of view?
Anything else up here?
What is the upper amount, um, that you have to be set back from a, um, habitat block?
What you see is the boundary of the habitat block.
Okay. Any building in that back parking lot.
Would be up to seven.
In this, in this middle option, that would be up to seven.
Be outside the, uh, overlay di- uh, district.
Up to seven, inside would be the same as the T four.
Which is twelve.
Just twelve.
Ten, ten to twelve.
Ten to twelve.
Okay.
Um, Donna had her hand up next.
Well, you just answered my question. Yeah, it was, it was, you know, the question was, you know, the, so the difference would be going from seven to potentially twelve stories. Which is.
Colin?
I don't know. Well, that's not that tall, really.
Yeah.
For Vermont, really.
Oh, Vermont, yeah.
Not tall for Burlington. Not.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's in a depression, I mean, it's, it's in a real low spot right there, too.
Uh, so I guess, one, so I guess, two points, because one question is, just to clarify. That weird sort of stuff that gets excluded by the buffer to the far east of parcel, would I be correct assuming it's?
That's too. It's too small.
Yeah, it's too small to actually do anything.
Inaccessible and it's about this.
Okay, yeah, it's on, okay, it's on slope, okay, so it really is just about this area.
See where the, the purple is, that's the brook?
Yes.
So that's sort of, if you drive on the highway and you look and it looks like the land has dropped into a gully, that's right.
This is done, so it really is practically just about this part.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I I guess my other point is, I think. Uh, we- with with regards to the aesthetic thing, I absolutely, I I guess this is, it's more my personal opinion. I think on the aesthetics, I would feel more strongly weighting the aesthetics or of, or carry if we were saying something like. Like, it was more grassland or it's like on a waterfront or on a lake. I think maybe for me, I I guess the way I sort of envisioned this place, I mean, this parking lot, is it's a very beautiful area. With quite tall trees on both sides, so I guess. I I know, and of course, I'm aware, aesthetics is a very personal opinion. I guess if this were being put, say, like in the middle of a meadow, I would feel much more differently about it. But if, given that it is known for having, Centennial has really nice big, you know, mature tall white pines that themselves are like, you know. Hundred feet tall or so, I guess I am personally less concerned about aesthetics. Than would be in most other parkland contexts, but I I'm aware that it's definitely only aesthetics, it's a, it's a personal taste, absolutely.
I just, I just kind of the, the thought of, of relating aesthetics to height. To me doesn't compute, because you can have ugly tall buildings and you can have beautiful tall buildings. And the whole idea behind the form-based code is supposedly that we have beautiful tall. Beautiful buildings, right? It's, it's kind of, that was the whole nature of the D four is to sort of address the aesthetics of it and everything. Um, just for the sake of simplicity, because reading through this, it was very confusing about that line. Very confusing, you know, and I just thought, and you know, my initial impression was, why don't we make it just all the same? Uh, and you're saying the only reason to not make it same is because there's a consideration that perhaps. Having a little bit less sunlight on one side is gonna affect the trees. Cause it's not gonna have an effect of the trees on the south side or even the east side. Potentially, there could be a little bit on the, on the north side, cause that's the part that really.
That it was not sort of tree health related, it was if you're walking through Centennial Woods.
Oh, really?
Yes, that's my understanding of the discussion that happened at city council.
Well, then I agree with whoever was saying that that would not be an issue, cause I don't.
Wouldn't affect the trees, but it would affect the users.
I don't, I don't think it would affect the users much at all. I mean, that's, that's a very easy part to get lost in, I've, I've walked in that park. It is very confusing, and you don't see anything outside of it. You know, which is why it's so hard, easy to get lost in it, because, you know, you see the stadium at one point, a baseball stadium. And like, oh, I'm there, oh my god, how do I get back? It's lights when they. It would be really nice to have some signage in that park, because it's super easy to get lost there.
There's new signage, actually, just in the last couple of weeks, there's blazes and new signs and maps. And the trails, the trail loops are, um, the three main ones are blazed with different colors and, um, named.
We'll have to check that out.
And then the maps even include the like lesser traveled paths, at least on the maps, they don't have blazes, but it's, it's really quite nice.
So that's great, that's great to hear.
Um, I mean, I, this is like my daily walk, like I know, I know these ones really well. I guess I'd have to say, like, I I kind of agree with Colin in that, um. You know, if we're gonna have taller building, like, there's so many jobs within walking distance of this parking lot.
Hmm, yeah.
The difference between being in the traffic overlay and not in the traffic overlay feels not as, like. Technically important here, because there's so many jobs within walking distance. So it, like, I know in many other locations, like the traffic overlay means so much.
Doesn't make sense here at all.
It feels like the traffic overlay itself is not as important in this particular location. People are currently like driving to this location and then like walking to their job at, on, so. And.
We're walking into the wood.
Or, or walking into the woods, so, I, I mean, it feels a little strange to have like a completely new, like. Complicated piece of the LDRs to make an exception for like what's currently a parking lot right now, close to so much other stuff. Um, like, I know I told the council that, like, it just made sense at the time that it would all be one. And we hadn't talked about it in great detail, but I mean, that's what we're doing now, and now that we're talking about it, it feels like our original recommendation. Makes a lot of sense to me still, like, it seems almost like a weird loophole to say. All of this here is all connected to the same thing, except for back there in the parking lot, that would, like, get, like, a note, um. I think I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I, 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 no, I, I, I definitely agree with what you're saying. I guess one other thing that would dance as well, it's like, well, this thing is currently a giant sea of asphalt, that wall right there. I mean, I think literally anything that got built there short of like, you know, like an industrial plant, which wouldn't be a lot anyways. Would I think be, uh, an improvement over the current just sea of pavement. Like, even if the new developed structure has like a structure with parking lot, even that part of the parking lot would, with the form-based code and the stormwater treatment standards. Look nicer than what's currently there, so I sort of, I sort of see any development in my mind is better than a, you know. Football fields worth area of just asphalt, which it currently is, um.
It won't remain that way.
What?
It won't remain that way, it'll be built apart.
Yeah, so my, so my point is, I guess I see, I I sort of see almost anything, that, any, any redevelopment that has a parcel, I think. Would be an improvement on the existing asphalt, uh, yeah, a- any, anything, whatever happens there.
Wha- whether, you're saying whether it stays T four or the MS.
Either way, I guess, um.
Better standards.
I guess, I, I may, I mean, maybe that's around what I was saying as well, a twelve-story building in there, I think would look nicer than a sea of pavement. Is my take on it, I mean, I just, I don't like seas of pavement.
Other commissioner items, looks like there's more audience questions, um, Tom?
I'll be brief, um, first, I I actually did some research on building heights. Um, and because I had assumed lively that, um, you know, you achieve economies of scale by going higher. Um, it doesn't work that way, unfortunately, for the most part. Um, um, there are other complications that occur. Once, I mean, obviously, there's a four or five, uh, level, uh, story building. Where you can still build with stick and then you have to go to steel, which doesn't become cost-effective at all until you get above eight. But even then, um, it gets a lot more expensive. I don't know how they do it in Montreal and make the numbers work for student housing, which they appear to do around Concordia. I'm still ignorant, maybe, uh, that's something Kelsey's looked into yet.
Yep. No, there's, there was a broader discussion about heights in general, and we're looking at raising the heights in the T four and the T five. And we covered a lot of this ground in that discussion over the last, over last summer.
Um, but on the other hand, to take Tim's point, if you really feel like a building there is gonna offend. People using Centennial Woods, and, you know, maybe it might. Uh, make the whole thing, including the parking lot, um, uh, part of the habitat block. I mean, it may seem, you know, contra to, but that would be the effect of your zoning, would be to say. We're, we're, we're saying, uh, that Centennial Woods is more important here than building buildings here, so, bang. Um, I don't know how UVM would feel about having their, um, having their option to build. They might, they might, they might or they might not.
Tom, just, just to be clear, are you arguing towards putting it as part of the habitat block? Or what is your actual point?
To say that the, that, that.
I don't think anyone's saying that, I wanna know what you're saying, like, what is your?
My thing would be, um, I don't necessarily favor, um, letting a habitat block there. Dominate how de- development should occur, that would be me. Um, but, you know, people, other people feel strongly, I've walked in the trails and the, back here as well. I used to live for a short time in that, uh, UVM, how, well, it was UVM, housing area further back. Um, 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 off East Avenue, and, um, you know, it's nice to have the woods back there. Um, but, on the other hand, it really, so it's a call, I mean, you're trying to serve two masters. There's no point in making them both unhappy if you really are prioritizing the use of the, uh, of Centennial Woods. Or if you're not, then you have to let a building go and see the economics will allow for. I would, that would be my take, because it's in the perfect, as Ryan said, it's, it's really almost in the perfect spot. If you're gonna build something tall, I remember when what was going to go into Kmart, is that sort of low? And you could go tall there and not really offend anything. Uh, well, it didn't work out that way, of course, but, um, you know, I I remember Paul mentioning it at the time. And, you know, we don't own the land, we don't own that, so who knows what will happen? But I'd hate to see zoning constraining doing something rational, just because we have T four here and we do that there. We do something there, instead, just say, we're not restricting the building heights. Believe me, the economics will shut it down in a heartbeat.
Um, okay, any, um, kind of thoughts, it'd be nice to come to a conclusion, um, John?
I'd, I'd be in favor of just recommending T four for the whole thing, second choice would be the proposal that's up there. I don't think we wanna leave it. I'm kind of there, and until we see a lot of competition to build buildings anywhere near twelve. I think we effectively have no height limit.
Well, yes.
Once somebody says, hey, I wanna build fifteen and I can't, but right now.
And they could come back begging for a zoning change.
Right, but that, so I don't, I don't disagree with your point, but right now, I think economics have effectively limited what people are willing to build.
So, we, would it be helpful to have a motion specific to what we're like to see here?
Or? Yeah, so similar to a, a previous meeting when we've sort of wrapped up a topic and kind of put it in the pile for the neck for warning. With, with the next sort of pile of amendments, so it wouldn't be moving it, warning it for anything in particular this time.
It towards the next step.
Yeah.
Um, does anyone feel strongly enough to make a motion on behalf of a path?
It is in the, um, there is a proposed, there is a potential motion in the packet.
Okay.
That is not.
Although that's not.
This is maybe, that's actually not.
Right, but we would, we would just. Cut out the middle, cut out that middle phrase.
Are you gonna do that, John, trying to do it?
I'll move to rezone the area of HSMU north of Williston Road and west of I eighty-nine to T four. And to include this in the next set of land development regulation amendments.
I'll, I'll second that.
Great, two, motion, okay. Me hearing no discussion, any more comments? Okay, on favor of John's motion?
Aye.
Okay, unanimously approved, good discussion, um, I think that would give me some more things to be able to talk through with the council when the time comes. Good discussion. Thank you. Um, very good, so, uh, moving on to item number six. Um, which is a presentation by staff of the Act two fifty tier one A.
All right, uh, so this is the driest part of what you're gonna hear of, uh, Act two fifty tier one A yet. Um, but I think it's important because it does, um, as we talk about, um, how we operate as a city. I think it's important that you all, um, are aware of this going into, um, you know, council's about to start their budget discussion. So I wanna talk about operationally, how does this work?
That's a cool photo.
Yeah.
Yeah, I need to scale better than what I've seen.
All right, um, so there's a lot of text in here, but, um. Basically, here's what happens, um. When a community becomes, uh, a community applies for tier one A status, you've talked all about, you have to demonstrate. That we have sufficient regulations, et cetera, et cetera. When that takes place, um, new projects know, that would have gone to Act two fifty, no longer go to Act two fifty. In addition to that, um, and so, you know, the next iteration of a project doesn't go to Act two fifty at all. It only goes to the local level, it was always going to the local level to begin with, but it doesn't go to Act two fifty. Um, the city is, um, also taking on responsibility to, um. Basically, uh, um, manage the existing conditions. That, uh, an act, a prior Act two fifty permit has placed on a property. So if an act, if Act two, Act two fifty says that, prior decision said that all buildings at the U Mall property must be purple. It becomes ours to, uh, administer and enforce going forward. Um, the way that that over time gets addressed, so that we're not just operating in two completely different buckets. Is that, and you see in number two here. Um, the DRB, um, as a project comes in, um. Would, uh, incorporate those existing conditions from the Act two fifty into their decision. Or, um, the board can determine under any of these letters here. That for whatever reason. That for whatever reason, that condition is no longer relevant. So the thing was built. And so that can be let go, or, um. There is already another state permit that, um, it remains in effect and so it doesn't, we don't need to duplicate, um. Uh, there's some federal law or state law that doesn't apply anymore. Um, an important one is that. If the DRB determines that we regulate that subject area, um, just perhaps differently, so we say. Um, we care about color, but we're perfectly fine with up to ten colors instead of just the color purple. Then the DRB can say, any of these ten colors are now appropriate, that's our regulation, we are not bounded by. That, um. Limitation that was just given by Act two fifty. I'm obviously using a pretty simplistic example, but it could be traffic, could be, you know, all sorts of different things. Um, and then, uh. The last one about uh fiscal or use condition that is no longer in effect. Uh, that, um, would no longer be relevant. So something has physically changed out there or something is, um. Uh, the proposal is different than it was previously, and so it's no longer relevant. So that will be a uh decision that gets made by the DRB, um, to, uh. And, uh. And presumably the delegated authority to the administrative officer where that's appropriate to sort of, um, bring. Prior Act two fifty decisions into the fold. Um, as I said before, um, existing permits, um. The, uh, we then have a series of, um. Steps that we need to do to record the information, send it, um, notify, uh, the Act two fifty office. Uh, a. Variety of different procedural stuff with it. Um, it's very high level right now. This is directly what you're seeing out of the legislation. Um, the Land Use Review Board, which is the new state board that's been set up, um, is actively developing. The more granular guidance on exactly what this means. So for example. They mentioned the appropriate municipal panel, they don't specifically call out the delegation of authority to the zoning administrator. That would be potentially dealt with, or, um, you know, what does it mean to regulate a subject area? Um, there's a whole breadth of what that could be, um. We feel pretty good about where this is standing. Um, it seems like a logical way to take what is an existing condition and a, um. Potentially important condition that was applied for something maybe the city never regulated in the past that you're doing right now. Um, that it doesn't just vanish into thin air, but that it also gives the ability to say this is no longer relevant. In our, in our community and actively make that decision, um.
Well, does the, um, the notice to persons. Um, requiring notice under this, and is that the adjacent landowners? Is that?
Yeah.
Part of that?
Yeah, it's the adjacent landowners, um, uh. Yeah, it's basically the 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 adjacent landowners and somebody can specifically request in writing. To be notified of a specific project, and so it's that kind of, it's that kind of stuff.
That hasn't changed.
That has not changed, so it's basically just saying it's the exact same thing. Um, interestingly, one of the, um. Head scratchers that the Land Use Review Board is working on completely from their end is that this tier one A designation. Is something that is subject to periodic review and renewal. And so they have to have in their mind, what happens if a community either decides. This was a terrible idea, we don't wanna do it anymore, or this community has not operated it well, we're gonna pull it back. And what happens to things going back to Act two fifty? So it is not a very fun. Set, but that is some of our, uh, uh. What they're working on in terms of guidance and reporting and not being overly burdensome. Um, we feel really good about the communication that we've been having, um, with Land Use Review Board members who are, um. Uh, who are developing this, and we've had a very strong working relationship with them and we feel pretty good. Um, the way that we have, cause that's the end of my slideshow, the way that we have proposed it in this year's budget. Um, is currently our department is five and a half full-time equivalent, so we have, um, five full-time people and one part-time person. Um, that part-time person has let us know that, um, towards the end of the fiscal year, they're gonna be moving on. Um, and, uh, so in the budget proposal to council, that would be proposed to become a full-time position.
Mm-hmm.
That would allow us to take on, um. Some of this additional administration, it would allow us to, um, part of the administration is also enforcement. All cards on the table, the state has two, count them, two enforcement people for the entire state for Act two fifty. So it is not a necessarily high bar that we are being expected. You know, the Land Use Review Board is aware that that's what the current condition is, so when we have to demonstrate that we have capacity. It is not, you know, capacity that is forty times what they have. That's not the bar they're setting.
You have someone live in the office.
Sometimes. So it's maybe like a. Point two FTE for the enforcement, like you could just say it's a part, a part of someone's job or in that way.
It's it's a part of it and, you know, we're aware that, you know, there are, just as there are our entire history of local permits. There is an entire history of Act two fifty permits, and so being able to be responsive. Um, to people's questions about what does it mean to, you know, I I have a permit condition from eleven years ago that Act two fifty said I have to update my. Blank, blank, blank study, what do we need to do? We've been in communication already with the, um, district commission staff, uh, who are in the Essex office here about. The buckets that those conditions fall into, they're very similar to the buckets that ours fall into, which are standard conditions that go into every single application. Um, you know, you must complete the project as required, um, as as permitted. Uh, they. A second bucket is typically the, here's the standard and fill in the blank. You are allowed up to X number of vehicle trip ends and the X changes. And then the third bucket is the hardest one is the one that we also have is the one-off specific to a given project. Uh, there shall only be purple buildings at this site. It's there. They're not usually, they're they're not silly like that. I'm just using that as a, as an example. We're not, we feel like they have already scanned all their data, all their permits. We feel like we've got a pretty good handle on being able to. Research that and find that. It does, it is a little bit of labor, especially upfront, because there's no institutional knowledge that we've been taking, but. We're also very familiar with the projects and typically, something that unusual that came up at Act two fifty probably unusually came up here too. Um, our whole posturing of this thing to begin with was. There's very little that happens at at the Act two fifty stage that hasn't been addressed locally. So if they change their plans in some way, they had to come back to us anyway, so it would really be more of a. Timing condition, or maybe there's, you know, something about the location of signage or something like that. I'm looking at you, Donna, I don't know why, but. I can't think about lighting of signage, I think I was.
Vibe, so you're feeling my vibration, is that, I think about all the times that I have had people on, um. People wanting to make changes in their properties.
Yeah.
And that were prevented from doing so because of lighting criteria that were built into the project. But then those criteria were. I mean, they were so old, but they didn't make sense anymore.
Right.
And and.
Right, so there's a mechanism in this to for for local rules to.
Well, the problem is.
To provide some of those.
Well, the problem is our local rules are even more defunct than the state rules.
Sure, and that's not saying that, I'm not saying we don't need to be working on those things, but it's it's a a better mechanism to have control over what those. What those new standards are and what a a property would be allowed to change to instead of. Somehow being, having two sets of rules applying or having conflicting things in your conditions versus your, um.
It would be nice for it to be consistent though, you know, cause at least under Act two fifty. It was, even there, it wasn't consistent, but it was relatively consistent. At least they were using the same language, you know. You know, you give it to different towns and the language and, you know, the lighting ordinances, and I've dealt with a bunch of different ones. They're all over the place and.
Keeping in mind that the local always applied anyway too, right? That that's been, that's been part of the challenge is that. Those advancing projects had to meet the local and the state. Um, the last thing I just wanna mention quickly, um, before I wrap up here, um, is on the revenue side of this. Um, we are doing some initial exploring, um, and we'll be, uh, talking with, um. The finance office, the city manager, and then ultimately, um, council about, um. Where there may be the possibility of some, um. Sort of win-wins all around. Um, Act two fifty is not an inexpensive process to go through, set aside the engineering costs. There's pretty substantial application fees. Um, for those projects that are doing that, that's a substantial benefit. To not have to pay that, as we're looking at our fees, we may look to recapture a small portion of that. In order to cover the staffing, which I think still becomes a massive net win, um, for the applicant, but also doesn't. You know, uh, uh, put more burden on the general taxpayer in our community, so just wanted to sort of wrap that up because we did talk about the staffing side of it.
I was going to ask you that.
Which also makes sense, cause it's another way that. The tier one A system is incentivizing developers to be building in these areas that are, that wouldn't have Act two fifty applying is if it costs me. A hundred thousand dollars more to build in this area than in that area, you're gonna go over here, so. That's another sort of wrinkle in the regulatory benefit to to doing tier one A for 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 cities and for developers.
Wouldn't.
Yeah, uh, I was just gonna say financially, like it seems, I would think one of the things that Paul said really jumps out and that's that. Currently, um, someone doing a project in these areas needs to do both. The local zoning and the Act two fifty, and in this case, it'll be streamlined to just. Local, and we're just need to make sure our local zoning makes sense, and then if there's a fee associated, it's it's, you know. I would guess that the engineering and permitting costs are gonna go down in that they're not having to meet two different requirements, um.
And those two two sets of all the review process, right, and?
It's it's a, it's a significant effort, like when my projects have to go through Act two fifty, like we all just are like, oh my gosh, you've gotta be kidding, cause it's. You know, my projects are like a restoration project and it it doesn't trigger Act two fifty on its own, but if it already has an Act two fifty permit, now my. River restoration project has to go through Act two fifty and do all of this extra thing and all of those fees. Even though it's not developed, um, just because of the way the the system's set up.
Yeah, and even even down to the granular of having different submission requirements. Have different ways things are being submitted, having different formatting requirements can, it just takes, it takes time on the developer's end and then, you know, costs their staff money. As well, so it's like it goes all the way down.
Can you go back to your comments about existing Act two fifty permits and? You know, it it ends up at at the, at the DRB.
Ultimately, when when the, so until the applicant, the property owner applies to for something to change. Um, we take on the responsibility of administering the local and the existing Act two fifty conditions.
Basically merged in your permitting process.
But but before that, before it's in the permitting process, we are enforcing both. Then somebody comes in front of us for something, you know, it might be. A brand-new building, it might be something much smaller than that, and then that's the opportunity to, um. For the DRB to determine what remains relevant and what isn't relevant, uh, so to clean that up.
Okay.
So is is there going to be sort of a long-term goal of trying to? Merge as many of the Act two fifty conditions into local ones or, I know we're legally allowed, so I guess my my understanding is the whole point of one A status is that. Our local law, our our local land development regulations are achieving what Act two fifty was going to. So is that enough? Can we use that as argument to say? Get rid of some of those existing permits or rather try to say, hey, you have this condition, we're gonna swap this condition, or is that like illegal, the contract says it has to be. Purple when our things say must be green.
One little tweet to what you said, it's not, um, specifically that our regulations are doing what Act two fifty did. It is that, uh, municipalities demonstrated they have sufficient regulations. That are high enough quality to support development in the areas that are appropriate for development, is not trying to recreate everything of Act two fifty, but.
And we.
Okay. Yeah.
If you sort of think in a meta way, why did Act two fifty exist? It was to ensure that there was regulation in communities that maybe didn't have a lot of regulation, so in a meta way, yes.
Agreed, agreed, yeah.
Um, we, as currently. In the legislation, we can't merge them, that comes from the applicant's side. I think one of the things of, you know. As I look over the next few months, as the systems get developed, I think one of the interesting questions, if I were a developer. That I would come in with is, can I apply? Not to change my property, but just to merge the conditions so that I've got a simpler streamlined review process. Normally, we see an application to do something, they might come in and say, can we just come into, instead of having two sets of conditions? Get one, like, we're not actually doing anything except that you said we have to do a traffic study in six months and they said we had to do it two years from now. Can we just? Apply just to merge.
Uh huh.
Uh, I suspect that's gonna be a conversation. I don't know where that's gonna land yet, but I think those are the kinds of things we're working out. And that will, you know, advocate, I think, from the staff end to be as streamlined as we can.
Do you have concerns about? Taking on these administrative pieces, cause I mean, it's one thing for us to be like, sure, tier one A, let's do it, but then it's a whole nother thing for you.
Well, best.
Yeah, I mean, I I think, you know, we we are. We are going in eyes wide open and we are, um, cognizant. Um, we are working pretty, uh, closely with the Act two fifty office to get the data on. You know, what exactly it is, um, cause it's a new set of information that we currently don't have and will, you know, ma- making use of the fact that we now have a data manager to help us to. You know, pare that all down, um, and thinking about how we can be really efficient with it. So, um, not concerned, but certainly aware, um, you know, I think that, uh. We should be eyes wide open that this is a an added responsibility, but the whole purpose of it is to support. Thoughtful development and on a statewide level and local level thoughtful conservation statewide. Which is exactly what the city plan is calling for and exactly what your, you know. Direction has been as a planning commission, as a council, as a community, and so. In that vein, um, you know, aware but not worried. And what, preparing for, I guess.
Did I hear you say they've digitized all these permits?
They have, uh.
Scanned.
Scanned.
Cause I've done it, I've I've spent many hours asking for a a permit and they say with a. Filing cabinet, so they're knocking so.
So now it's an electronic filing.
Yeah, um, and I believe that their words were nearly done. And I don't know if nearly done meant nearly done in Chitting County or nearly done statewide. I have seen that it is much more comprehensive, again, you know, it's not fully digital, but it's scanned. Um, available.
Available.
Yeah.
But is it accessible to me, for instance?
Everything that we have, you have.
Yeah, I don't think it's the whole state, cause I was looking for one the other day.
Yeah. No. But they're they're aware.
One blurry page.
Well, and understanding that, you know, as Donna said, some of these, you know, decisions were made decades ago at this point. And maybe handwritten or typewriter written or or whatever else, and that. Information hasn't been put into a different database as far as I'm aware, um, that is, you know, searchable, sortable, anything, you know. Beautiful, except looking for that one property.
I just have a question regarding, there are ten criteria in Act two fifty that are really important and that's. I think how the initial legislation was meant to really have a consistent view of. Development across the whole state in terms of, um, also the ten criteria, so. Um, by doing this tier one, um, do they recognize that those ten criteria? Are embedded in our zoning requirements for the, or?
I'll say it slightly differently, I guess I'll say that the, there's legislation that. Indicates what the local municipality has to prove in its regulations are sufficient. To qualify for tier one A, so it's not necessarily all of the ten criteria.
Uh huh.
It is ones that the legislature determined were um really important for planned growth areas. Because Act two fifty, of course, was supposed to cover every and all areas. And so um it tilts towards smart growth type things. Have we made sure that we're gonna be creating pedestrian friendly environments with a uh uh, you know. And have we regulated rare threatened endangered species and river corridors and things like that? It's not necessarily working lands type regulation because. And those will still be in Act two fifty in the tier two and tier three areas.
Alright, that's helpful.
Great, no action required, just wanted to bring you all up to speed on to the next piece of the puzzle.
Continue your education in chunks.
Um Tim and the.
Does the state anticipate that eventually the workload of the Act of fifty offices will go down? After this transition occurs or it will stay the same, will they be able to reduce headcount in like five years? Because it'll all be transferred over to local planning and zoning and the deserts areas of this of the state.
Two to one. Enforcement.
I don't know where that conversation is. I think that some of that will depend a little bit on what happens with tier three. And what happens with the this this conversation of, you may have heard this term, the road rule. Which is tier two is basically existing um status quo. But the road rule means that any area where you have a private road of at least half a mile in length. Automatically triggers Act two fifty, so that might mean more Act two fifty in some areas. I don't know if that's an objective or not, but certainly it's a possibility. In the conversations we've been having with the Land use Review Board, which is sort of the Oversight Board. You know, I think that they are recognizing and understanding that a successful tier one A is one that is not only. For communities in Chittenden County, you know, it has to be something that works in uh Rutland City. Um and works in Newport and a few other places. And so maybe there will be a um some savings in there. Um but I I don't know that they're making declarations of that at this time yet.
Okay, let's move on to item seven, which is infill housing and condo associations and the HOAs, homeowner associations. The general intro to the topic and discussion, um this is kind of the first time that we are talking about this.
Yeah, so this is just something that has um come to the fore in our minds a little bit. Uh when we've been doing a lot of work in the last couple of years for increasing the availability for people to do infill on their properties. But then recognizing that the state has not um chosen to restrict private um restrictions uh on properties. So the key thing for South Burlington is because we are not one of the older places to be developed. Like a most, most of our housing stock is from like the nineteen fifties or so and forward. Um that is the era of uh HO homeowners associations, uh condominiums, when you get into the seventies and eighties. Um and general deed restrictions all the way through. So that's something that we've been thinking a lot about is when we've been putting through different minimum lot sizes, changing our setbacks. Allowing four unit buildings, all these things that are part of state statute. And then we have been working really hard and you all have been working really hard to to right size for South Burlington. That's going to be applied, that will apply differently in different parts of the city. Uh so it's just something that we wanted to raise to you all, that this is not something that is some that can be changed overnight. Um but for example, some of the older areas, older older neighborhoods may end up seeing more infill. Because they're allowed to, because they don't have these neighborhood wide covenants or 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 HOAs. Um than some other areas that were more developed in the eighties, nineties and and later. So it's just an issue that we wanted to flag to you. It is some somewhat an equity issue, but also just an inequality issue, just the rules are applying in different ways. Um I sent you out an outline uh yesterday afternoon, hopefully you had a chance to look that over. It was just a a outline of the basics of this topic area. So there's a few different things that that come into effect here, there's homeowners associations, there's deed restrictions. Um and those are related but a little bit different. Homeowners assos- associations can apply, uh have bylaws, you know.
And the declaration.
In the, yeah, and so then they, that's something that actually can be changed a little bit more easily than a deed restriction. Sort of in your deed, it says you can do X, Y, or Z. Um it generally applies to an entire development area, whether it's a condominium, minimum development or single family homes. It can happen in kind of any neighborhood. It really, that type really started taking off in the eighties, give or take. Um so South Burlington, just with our development pattern, we have a good number of neighborhoods that have this kind of um. Both restriction and governing structure over common lands, um common access, private driveways, private common amenities, things like that. Um deed restrictions are very similar, um but they can also be for a smaller number of of of. Parcels that don't have an HOA, so hypothetically, someone owns a two acre lot and they decide like I'd. I'll, I'm gonna subdivide and sell these other things, but I only want anybody to ever be able to build a single family home. And not a duplex or or whatever else. So you can have these smaller scale things that apply to a few homes or the homes that came from one mother parcel. Um but doesn't apply to sort of a bigger area. Um those often don't have a governing board like an HOA does. Um but they may have shared use agreements or shared maintenance agreements for plowing and and things like that, especially if there's a shared driveway. Um and then just running through, there's there's a handful of things, there's use restrictions. So that's something that when we've been talking about putting, allowing the limited neighborhood commercial. In some of our um in in our single family home, historically, single family home areas. There will be areas in the city that that is not possible um because of restrictions in um in the pri- in the private sector. Um so we might see those in some of our older areas and then not in some of our newer areas. And trying to figure out how how that looks and and what the effect of that is. Um development standards is another is another way, um style, height, color. Um similar aesthetic features, often you'll see a neighborhood that's like every house is tan. Well, that was because probably of of some sort of restriction when they were built. Um lot dimension requirements, that's often a an issue when they're, the requirements are different than the cities. So when we've moved things like to the five foot setback, side setback, there may be restrictions that still say ten or fifteen or more. Uh minimum lot sizes, we said, you know, we changed it to five thousand square feet, there may still be ten thousand square feet or greater. In in private uh restrictions. And some of this we don't know and and Paul and I have been floating a little bit of. Could we put, you know, bring in a legal intern or something to do or review, review of these documents in South Burlington? Sort of get a lay of the land about where are these things applying, who are they applying to? What kinds of things are included in in the private restrictions to really understand what we're dealing with when we're looking at these things? Yeah.
To what degree do you think people are even aware of these um restrictions, covenants?
Yeah.
Cause I I think in my neighborhood, there were things that I was aware that were in, you know, in covenants, but people ignore them all the time. And nobody ever says anything.
There's a huge range of how these are enforced and how much people know about them. Um if you bought, if you purchase a property and you read your deed, there would be a reference in there either to specific restrictions. Or to another document, which would be your HOA um declaration bylaws. Um so you're put on notice when you buy your property and you're supposed to have read your deed uh to do that. Whether people do that or not, that's a whole nother story. But then the enforcement and and that is a whole, that's a whole nother ballgame. Where um there are often, you know, you run across a a a neighborhood that has covenants or has um. In the deed, it says, oh, there's an HOA with bylaws, but nobody's ever been on it, no, there's never been a meeting, there hasn't been a meeting for thirty years. You know, so then you run into a question of, is this enforceable? Is it enforceable by who if the HOA's been dormant for decades, what does that mean? For example, like it doesn't apply in in Vermont, but I I owned a home in New Hampshire and I was by deed restriction. Not allowed to hang laundry outside. Um that's not applicable in Vermont, we actually have a law that, a right to dry law. But in New Hampshire, you could, but the HOA that was supposed to have been formed in nineteen ninety was just never convened. It was never formed. So the quote, you know, do you think, oh, I'm gonna put up my clothesline, it says I can't put up, nobody's ever. But technically, your neighbor could say like, hey, it says you can't have a clothesline. So it's a little bit tricky in some of that, that especially becomes tricky if there's common land. Um you know, there could be common land that is supposed to be held in common and, you know, someone goes and cuts down all the trees. And then there's no HOA, well, who's footing the bill for, you know, there's a lot of complexity when you get into all of this.
It may even. I think maybe or covenants, but it may even not be a subject to the HOA conditions. It may be a question of like, uh somebody got a plan to develop an approval from us, a developer did. For a neighborhood with sixty eight homes in it. So then you are one of the sixty eight homeowners and you say, I'd like to turn my house into a duplex. The approvals for sixty eight, how do you create a sixty ninth? Who's okay do you need? It might be fairly straightforward if it's within the structure of a existing home. But what if you were to want to build a second home on your lot or you wanted to expand out? And so that sort of becomes its own challenge, it isn't necessarily about the HOA, except that the HOA may have to sign off on it. And then that comes back to you all as a question that we're starting to wrestle with of. If that is in fact the case, how do we make it less painful for somebody to be able to. Make that duplex out of a single family home, um knowing that they may have to get their HOA approval. It may maybe one thing to get no HO- HOA approval, maybe a second thing to say, oh, and by the way, you have to amend forty six plan sheets. And it's gonna cost you fourteen thousand dollars to do that. You know, whereas a neighborhood that doesn't have that, has none of that on it.
I mean, as I live in a self managed HOA and I can't, I wouldn't be able to do that because I own, I own the building and ten feet around.
Yeah.
So I don't have any land on which to build it excessively.
There's even more extreme versions of that where um there was an era in South Burlington where footprint lots were um popular. So you only owned the outside walls of your home. So if you come into us and you say, hi, I'd like a permit for a deck, we can't give it to you unless you have permission from your HOA. Because technically outside the wall of your property is common land.
Yeah. I mean, condo style, you don't even own the land. You own a percentage of all the land.
Or you don't even own the land.
You own the space defined by the walls, you don't even own the walls.
There's a lot of different legal structures and we don't regulate what the ownership structure is. We can, you know, we have to let people do if they want to do a condo, if they want to sell, you know, in different ways. Um but it comes up with decks, it comes up with pools, it comes up with fences, it would certainly come up with a garage or an ADU or an addition of any kind. Um so all of those things, just having an HOA and having common land in some area, whether it's right at the wall or ten feet beyond beyond. From your home adds complexity, which then adds time, adds cost as as we're saying.
It's complex and costly for the homeowners.
Yeah.
I had to run a line from my house to my garage, about a hundred feet.
Mm-hmm.
I had to go through the whole legal process of getting an easement because I.
Right.
Ran partly over common land.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Um Con?
Uh I guess so so jumping forward like, in terms of future steps, so as you as we you mentioned, for example. Vermont has a right to dry your clothing law, cool, I didn't know we need that, but cool, it exists.
Yeah.
Uh which, you know, effectively therefore means you, my understanding is you can't have an HOA bylaw banning people from drying stuff.
Right.
Or more specifically, if you do have one, it's not a void.
No, would, yes. So do we have the legal authority as a municipality to pass stuff like that or is that rest purely with the state?
Um that's a qu- a good question, um it likely primary, at least primarily would rest with the state.
Primarily, you said.
Well, it just, we haven't done the full legal analysis of that. It is an interesting thing when, for example, the state says that a municipality has to allow a single family home to have an ADU. But if a mun- they, it all it says is like a municipality has to let you have an ADU. It doesn't say that a private HOA has to allow you to have the ADU.
Yes.
So.
But could we then, but could we create our own law that said you have to allow a AD, you have to allow AD? It's like, are we allowed to do that? Or maybe an ADU like some arbitrary thing, like can you ban.
Right.
How to co- house color laws saying it's city of South Burlington, all house coloring bylaws or no one would, can can we even do that?
We probably can't do it to existing ones.
Okay.
We may have some authority to say that as part of a DRB approval, that the HOA documents cannot preclude blank.
Yeah.
Or even.
Not so for future ones, it would be part of the permitting.
In in theory, I mean, we're talking theoretically right now, but I don't know that we would have the authority to un undo a different way later.
Theory, but yeah.
Yeah.
No. No, but as critic.
Do you ever know what the HOA agreements will be before a development is built?
We see them.
Is that part of the conversation?
We see them before everything is finalized, but we are principally looking at them for what are they putting in the docs? Documents as some responsibility to the cities.
Yeah.
You know, oh, and by the way, the city will maintain all of our stormwater infrastructure in perpetuity at their cost for that, very tiny writing, that's what we're looking for.
So.
Well, I'm saying that's what we're looking to make sure it's not in there.
Yeah, so critic critically, the private restrictions are a contract, they're a contractual right. We don't have the ability to interfere with contract um in a general sense, there might be a way to wiggle through with certain things. Um but the right to contract is something that lives with the state and sort of regulation of contracts would be at that level.
So what they.
Something to do, to do, we do wanna know is that um federally, you are not allowed to have discriminant, discriminatory covenants. Cause that was a, you know, a big issue around, you know, I mean.
Rid lining.
Forever. Um where for various ways and either directly or sort of indirectly, you know, you have to, you have to purchase your home with cash. That requires a certain level of cash and so then it ex- excludes anyone who would have to have a mortgage, which then disproportionately affects certain groups of people. Like there were a lot of ways that covenants went in weird, roundabout ways to try to regulate, especially things like race and class. Um that is not allowed anymore.
So was the ADU restriction discriminatory or?
You were gonna do up here first.
Yeah.
Um there's not a, there's not a, oh, to say no ADUs.
Yeah, because you're like discriminating against people that might want.
What he has raised that as far as I know.
Yeah, okay.
There's been no.
Yeah.
Answer brought brought on that side.
What was lines, like are there, do you do, and we might already and somehow I don't know. Do we have in our land development regulations, like certain things that can or can't go into those agreements like?
No.
Or be allowed, I know you were talking about the con- the right to contract, but like, you know, it seems like it's a kind of a big deal.
Can't, so as Paul was saying, they can't, uh HOA documents can't put obligations on the city for for maintenance or or other things.
Right, right, there are other things that could be looked at either formally through the DRB process or.
Right, like, I I think you're the type type of question that you're asking is. Um it is not uncommon around the country, though thankfully I haven't seen much of it here, to say, for HOA documents to say that. Only single unit buildings with no ADUs are allowed in our condo. I think your question is, could we say no such thing is is, um you know, we, you cannot restrict anything below a fourplex, for example.
So that's an interesting one because it would be consistent with state law. Um that the that state law says a municipality can't restrict further than, you know, what we've all been dealing with in the last year. So saying to a a municipality telling a private HOA, you also can't do it. Would be, that's an interesting question because it would be consistent, it wouldn't be the municipality actually going any further than what the state has already stated as policy. So that would be an interesting one, the city going further and saying, you know, we're going to prohibit prohibit restrictions on. Um the color of your house, the state has never said anything about that, so then it would be a little bit, that's a harder.
So we the issue we don't know exactly what we can do about this?
Yeah, and honestly, we we raised the issue and we uh wanted to present sort of some background on it, it's not something that we're looking to um work on immediately. It's not in our work plan for this year. But just as when we're talking about like how are things building out over the with the land development regulations that we've passed in the last couple of years? What are we seeing, where are we seeing it? Um one factor that we wanted to highlight for you all is the potential for some things like this to exist in the city that are directing. May potentially direct some of the infill um to certain areas over others.
And some of, some of what we've been reading of happening around the country. And some of, some of what we've been reading of happening around the country is some. Pushback on municipalities in terms of um, from, from their constituents of. An unequal distribution of where infill housing is taking place. So it's taking place in areas that don't have HOAs, which are often older neighborhoods, often, um, you know. Less wealthy neighborhoods. And so if the. Result of municipality wide allowances for um, additional housing is that it's being carried in one part of a municipality, but not others. It started to have some political pushback in some parts of the country. And so that's why, you know, we have not seen any of that happening here. Um, but this is why we're starting a conversation with you now to sort of have this on your mental radars as.
And the reverse also being true. If you live, if you purchased your home ten years ago in a neighborhood that does have an HOA. And now you're looking to make it more affordable by adding an ADU or, you know, subdivide and making it a duplex, whatever, and you find out you can't do it. Then there's a mechanism that would have, would allow you to stay in your home. That you don't have access to because of these private restrictions, where someone in an older part of town, generally an older part of town. Has an ax- has access to a benefit. You know, if you look at it sort of the opposite way, they have access to a benefit uh, in their housing costs that you don't. Because you're in a different neighborhood and it's just an unequal.
And again, some of it may not even be private restrictions. It may be just the process of applying for a change with us.
Yeah.
Which we could potentially effectuate to a change of, you know, what if we said that? Any neighborhood that was previously approved at X units, could. A minor amendment to that is a twenty percent increase. So any homeowner who wants to. Add a duplex can do it up to twenty percent or something like that. And then beyond that, it's a major. Amendment. And so, you know, you can spend a few dollars or a lot of dollars. I'm not saying that's the right number, but thinking about how do we allow for? Change without it. You know, having to redo an entire. Master plan for a project at the expense of one homeowner who has an idea.
Do you, is this something, um, like this feels like it's not just us. Like, is this something that's come up in your? I know you're both active in like your professional society and like. Paying attention to the discussions like around. The Act one eighty one and the housing, how to get more housing in Vermont, like, like, has this come up somewhere else? And somebody's working on it, it's like Vermont.
Coming up on a nationwide basis in the communities that might be a little bit. Ahead of where Vermont was, like the ones who started it three years earlier. Um, I think that there's sprinklings, but I think we have more. Because of when a lot of South Burlington was built, there's a handful of communities in Vermont that are sort of in our. Realm. Um, but yeah, our peer networks, if we think a little more broadly, absolutely.
Like, it makes it seem like this is the kind of thing that would be really nice. And I don't know if like Vermont, like a sunny cities and towns or like somebody. Who is kind of helping figure out like housing issues at the statewide might work on, like.
Yep.
You're doing a lot. And this feels like kind of a bigger thing that affects so many more. So I don't know if it would be like, like an RPC.
Could be, yeah.
Kind of.
RPC makes some sense to me, in part because of the development pattern um, of the state is. There was a big push sort of statewide in the eight, eighty, ninety, eighties, nineties. Um, of building, but it was focused in Chittenden County. So you think of like most of Essex Town. Um, a lot of Milton, um, South Burlington, uh. Definitely Colchester. Like, there's a lot of areas of these, of these municipalities that were built out and likely have some version of, of restrictions. Um, so that's definitely true. I would say also generally. HOAs deed restrictions, private restrictions of any kind, um, is fairly, it's fairly well assumed that it's going to raise costs. Um, whether it means that the lot size has to be larger or you can only have one unit instead of two, or even just. You know, you have to have cedar shake shingles as your siding instead of something else. Um, design requirements, other things, like anything that further restricts what you're allowed to do with your, with the property. Likely increases um, the cost of housing um, because of it.
Well, the reason I bring it up is just because like, there's been so much discussion about housing at the statewide level. And like, you use the example of the, um. The right to dry, like. It makes me wonder if there's. Something that should really be done at the statewide level.
ADU, my right to do.
Not necessarily just like us trying to figure it out, but like if they could. I mean, it kind of piggybacks on what Colin said, like, is there other things at the state level that should be saying? Yeah, we told the municipalities they can't zone against ADUs, but. We're missing this whole.
Right.
Category of existing housing stock that.
I'll say specifically in Act one eighty one and Act forty seven, they declined to address private restrictions. It was something that was raised a couple of times. Here and there and in sort of different committees and different discussions. It was just not touched this time. It is sort of logically the next, yeah, it's sort of the next logical step in, in many places.
Yeah, I mean, anecdotally, so. Being with someone who was here saying that their HOA was sent to restricting them, saying there, you cannot put a EV charger or even run a cable out your window. So. They're effectively far from owning an EV.
Yep.
By their HOA, which is, I don't like that, but. That seems exciting to me. The state would have to evolve, because it sounds like we probably can't do that.
That's like the right to dry, the right to charge.
Yeah, that.
The right, the right to an.
But it sounds like that's out of our hands most likely.
It is, it is, it is much more legally sound uh, sitting as a statutory change. What our role is in advocating for that statutory change is something that is absolutely, um, you know, on the table. Whether it's South Burlington, whether it's RPC, whether it's a coalition of a few municipalities. Um, whether it's just, you know, us talking to our state senators or whatever it is, um. That is another, we don't always have to be solving things through our LDRs and our ordinances in South Burlington. We have other mechanisms. Um, both incentive and um, restricting or removing restrictions, um.
But, but I do think understanding the scope of the issue within. The city would be very helpful in terms of advocating to the state that. This might be something you wanna take up, cuz this is what it looks like here.
Yeah.
And the idea of making sure like a new neighborhood isn't putting in these restrictive. Contracts, like you were.
Yeah.
Yeah, and existing ones would be complicated. For ex- there's a, there's a, there's a condo association neighboring us. Uh, and when it was built, the maximum density was fifty nine units. They had, they had to borrow some land from. The neighborhood.
Yep.
Uh, that's something that would, that would stick. Or could it be changed?
It depends on whether we're talking about that being a private restriction or a condition of the approval.
Condition of the approval.
So it, 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 that's another question. Is if we effectively raise our densities by changing the minimum lot sizes or, or changing the building types that are allowed or things. Can old approvals take advantage of that? If they sort of borrow density from other places, does it mean that there's now new density on those new old places? Those, those are all sort of legal questions that are, are kind of pending.
Yeah, and I mean, I think in that specific example, that is su- that is a possibility for sure. I think the challenge becomes. The HOA would be, you know, it's no longer the developer, it's been given over to the HOA. So the HOA itself would have to. Essentially be the applicant, which is, um, having been on an HOA, it is, um.
Unlikely.
It's, it's unlikely, I suppose, until it's likely, right? I mean, the economics of. Everybody is changing and I, I would not be shocked if an HOA at some point said, boy, you know, this, this. Piece of land right in the middle that isn't a valuable natural resource that fifty years ago we thought was gonna be. You know, this thing, what if we could all benefit by ten more homes going in here? It's, it's, it's possible. We may see that.
We might, you know, what if those ten more homes are contributing to the same maintenance costs, like everybody's costs.
From some payout of ten more homes.
Something. Yeah, there's, there's, there's opportunity. Um, Tom?
I guess I'm wondering why you raised it. I mean, I did, lawyers do title searches and we all know about that, how that process works. LT and I do it.
Didn't CRO raise it?
But I'm curious why you raised it now. Cuz I, I saw it as a line item.
We, we brought it up.
Being in a down house regime. It was like ADUs, really? You know, so.
I think we brought it up because in the vein of, um, you know, I mentioned before this inequity potentially in the future of. Either you're an owner who can't take advantage of it, or you're in a neighborhood where. More of it is, as we're thinking about our housing targets for twenty five years from now. How do we be in front of the question of equitable distribution instead of waiting for it to happen to us?
Yeah, it's something that we've done a lot in the last couple of years is, for example, there used to be a lot more zoning districts. And one of the divisions was the southeast quadrant had its own set of zoning districts and we got rid of that. So that, you know, the Butler Farms neighborhood and the Orchards neighborhood, they're functionally similar. They should have the same zoning. Um, they have the same zoning, but, you know, I'm not saying either one has it, but like, one of them could have. Restrictions that the other one doesn't. So the outcomes will be different, even if we've done everything that we can on the municipal side. To even the playing field between similar things.
I guess my question is, have you had, had demand for ADUs, but which is zoning restrict, which. Uh, co- covenants restricted?
Not that I've heard.
Okay.
In any specific cases.
They might not very heard of it if they like, oh, well, I can't do it, they're not gonna read it.
My documents and I shouldn't do that. We have, there has been conflict about additions. Not conflict, but questions about additions for some, you know, footprint lot places. Yeah, I would say that we're, we're hearing. Question about dividing a single family home into a duplex in an area that has an approval. That limits the number.
We had a town hall example also. Um, so we're, we're starting to hear it a little bit.
Yeah.
But.
Just a question, um, are any developments done as a PUD that have common land automatically? A fill, you know, become HOAs? Cuz I know our neighborhood, you know, there's, there's three houses. But there's also single family homes, but all the single family homes are also part of one HOA.
I would say almost always yes, because there is almost always some shared element.
Yep.
Like stormwater, for example, or private driveways or something. I'm not even talking about amenities. I'm really just talking about like base functional things. You have to treat stormwater now. Um, if you have a private road, state law says that there has to be at least some.
Maintenance agreement.
Shared maintenance agreement, which lead pretty quickly to who's gonna operate it.
And then how wide is, where do we get the gravel and what color does it have to be and who, how many? How many years is it before you replace the gravel and?
Yeah.
Property manager.
Cuz I was just, kind of the next step of that process, I was thinking, so, you know, I have a single family home. I've already figured out a way that I could create a separate apartment, you know, within it. But now the terrifying thought of having to get approval potentially from the HOA. Who are, I mean, they don't even wanna have a vegetable in a garden. That's how fussy they are, you know? So I'm like, oh my god, I certainly would be terrified. If I had to get any kind of approval from them, cuz they are typically, the answer is no.
It can be an obstacle. I mean, there are definitely people who, for whom the idea of having an HOA and restrictive covenants. In their mind protects their property value.
And yeah.
So they're trying to do everything they can to keep things exactly the way they are and aesthetically pleasing in their opinion and all these other things like.
But you don't ask. I mean, these, these sort of things that involve, you know, an additional residence. You know, that gets a little more complicated. I mean, you know, my neighbors cut down all, every single tree in the backyard and scraped away the. Swale, just because they wanted to have a level backyard. You know, literally, they did that. My other neighbor put a whole bunch of trees. You know, cedar trees, right on the property line, even though it was the bottom of a swale. None of them survived. But it's like, nobody ever said anything about, you can't do that. You know, cuz they just did it.
Well, and it depends too. They, there may not be a rule about it. Like, HOAs can cover what they can anticipate, but occasionally some people come up with ideas. They're like, I'm gonna do this thing. And there's no rule.
So as long as there's no rule, they can't say no?
Yes, correct. Unless it's common land. Common, common land, if the land is held in common, that's a different thing. If it's a private law in an HOA, it has to be an HOA rule that applies. If it's real common land, there's, it's a group decision making and voting on what you do with it and all. Right?
Interesting question.
Yes, I, I hadn't seen this, but I was wondering if the city has a data layer for HOAs, like. I could press a button and see what property has fallen in that.
We do not have a, a.
Um, we do not. What we are in the process of building more robustly in the third of our. Three legged stool of data is, um. The footprint lot layer, um, which is sort of it's semi a lot and sort of not a lot. Um, there are state standards around managing that. And so having. That and our active parcels, what, what the other ones are, will be the first step in that direction. So it's not there, but it is, begins to be an indicator of it.
Um, I think you're gonna find a smattering of different types of HOA, some with.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Some with that are condos and lots of, you know, fourplexes or whatever that.
There's a huge range.
Land and question is if it was a PUD, was it, you know, in space that was part of, of the original, you know, approval? Then you have ones that just have some open land. So. So even though it might seem like it's inequitable, right? It, it's really complicated, right? So if you have a neighborhood of single family homes and there's a lot that has enough room.
Yep.
There's a motivation of one homeowner to put an ADU for their own purposes, for financial reasons, right? Boom. If it, if it's allowed and they can, they can swing it, they get it. You get a condo complex, right? How many people does it take to vote in a HOA to approve something? Is it just a majority or could that be?
It depends by the document. It can be majority, it can be two thirds.
If, if, if a condo complex has some land and they want to build an AD, a, a group of ADUs, it's a, it's a lot harder. So although it might seem inequitable, it's really difficult to apply the same rules to all those different, you know, neighborhoods.
Right, and so, just to be clear, what I was, what I was saying is. Um, there are some inequities that are possible, but the, the main thing is it's actually unequal application. So saying that our city rules, they apply citywide and we wanna say like, oh, look, this zoning district, every, all the rules are exactly the same. The functional reality is that that's not true because of both HOA versus not, but also as you're saying. A huge amount of variety, both in the rules for an HOA, the condo declaration. Um, the humans that are sitting on an HOA board can make a huge difference. Um, so there's a, there's a massive variety between not just. Not, not restricted and restricted, but between the different versions of the restricted and, and most HOAs, they start from a basic. Core number of, you know, provisions, but they can go in any direction and it really depends on. The developer at the time, um, that set up the, the HOA originally, um, what, what is or is not included in those documents.
It's very complicated. I know in our case, some things require a simple majority vote.
Right.
But others require a super majority of seventy five percent.
Right.
Whoa.
Yeah.
That's for the vegetable gardens?
No, that's for having a pigeon hawk.
Although, um, not.
No, it's for the alienation of property.
But interestingly, uh, again, from my own experience on an HOA, um, speaking about, you know, tools the state can deploy. Um, I believe it's, applies only to annual budgets, but annual budgets of HOAs are approved. Unless a certain proportion vote against it, because so few people often show up. That, so that changed in state law because a lot of HOAs weren't getting their budgets approved annually to.
Yeah.
Do this no cloud. Things can change.
Right. Yep.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah. Oh, adjourned. Unless you wanna talk about.
Good job, Paul. Good job.
For the.
Twentieth.
Recording stopped.
Oh, we're meeting twentieth then?